Carrie, do the blanket motion?
No, sir, there's three.
Excuse me, you have more? Okay. When, uh, let's see, Miss...
Three.
Was it number three? And we got three, I see, all right. Uh, motion, we got a blanket motion?
So moved second.
Uh, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes, I want to discuss number, number three's just popped up on the list.
Yeah, uh, let me, uh...
I'd like to, I'd like to pull out number three.
All right, let's pull out number three.
We're talking about different piece of property. And vote, if you pull out number three, Gibson will...
Yeah.
Yildin.
We'll, we'll call, hold out number three.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Do you want number three read in its entirety?
No, just read the title and then let me explain it.
Yes, sir, this is a letter from, uh, Mr. Paul Suskey, City Attorney, dated today. It's to Mayor Patrick Henry Hayes, and it's regarding a transfer of Smart House Way property in North Little Rock to Main Street Argenta.
One of the things, uh, and what this is, in the opinion of, uh, the City Attorney's Office, uh, essentially saying that, uh, we have the authority to transfer the property to Main Street Argenta. Uh, that is, is needed, uh, not necessarily that we're transferring it, but simply that we have the authority to transfer for consideration. Uh, and, uh, one of the reasons we're, uh, asking for this opinion is that, you know, we have discovered, as we all are aware, that there is, uh, uh, contamination on that property. Uh, as a city, we are, through the, whatever the Brownfields grant application process is, we have certain limitations on us being able to apply for those grants. Uh, however, a nonprofit in the form of Main Street does not. Uh, so, you know, we need, uh, not to transfer the property, but simply to, uh, express an interest, uh, and, and an ability to transfer the property should, should we receive the grant. Now, Mr. Suskey can elaborate on this a little bit if, if need be, uh, and, uh, and, and that then would qualify us for, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thou... Uh, is Michael Drake here? Michael, do you want, what, what kind of grants are we asking for in terms of dollars?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand, is that twice or one hundred thousand twice?
Twice.
One, yeah, we, we have, we have concluded, now that my, my recollection's got a little bit back, we've concluded, uh, that there is little to no contamination on site, uh, the seven acre site. Uh, we had some concern that, uh, there might be, uh, some, uh, vehicle fuel, motor fuel leaching that might have occurred from that filling station just down, down the way and leached along the wastewater line. But they, upon final or further investigation, it's deemed that that, to the extent there is, is insignificant. Uh, and therefore, the contamination, uh, uh, that we, or have is isolated to the three acre tract. So, you know, this is, uh, simply a vehicle to allow us to, uh, apply for the, uh, grant. And then, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, as we get closer to knowing whether or not we have it, then, uh, that is when we would have to actually consider the transfer.
Yes, sir, that's correct, not later than September 30th, 2005.
Okay.
Uh, any further questions?
Well, I think we probably need to, to, Mayor, I believe if we're talking about the three acres, it's actual partial 108 of the Westgate subdivision. And because there's nothing, there's, as far as I know, there's probably no legal description in here of a piece of property called Smart House Way property.
Yeah, I mean, it, uh, however, we might want to describe it...
We're talking about the triangle.
That's right.
Talking about the triangle.
That's correct.
And the triangle is, uh, I can get corrected, but I believe it's partial 108 of the...
Urban renewal.
Our city...
Urban renewal.
Did we, how do we want to describe this?
Uh, well, yeah, yeah, well, there's, every time I've gone through, there's several different ways it's been described and so forth. To actually do the transfer, it will take an ordinance adopted by the City Council to do this. This is just an opinion.
Ask an opinion of where we can do it.
Yeah, opinion, whether we can do it, and it's my opinion we can do it. This is not the actual authorization to do it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so, we all know what we're talking about, I don't know, you know, exactly the proper descriptive way, but it's, uh, it's certainly not a legal description, but, you know, for any purposes of clarification, it is the three acre tract that accompanies the seven acre tract that's across the street adjacent to the trail and the water.
That's a major part of the Gorman plan to redo.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and, uh, and, you know, even if we did transfer it, you know, I'm sure we would do it in a way that Main Street would move forward as a partner, uh, in the overall development in accordance with the wishes of the Council. So, uh, you know, all the purposes fall right in line with exactly what we all are interested in, so if anybody has any questions, this doesn't do anything other than accept and file a communication which indicates that it's something that we do have the authority to do.
Mayor, so I'll understand, okay. At the point in time when we, or if we choose to transfer the property, at that point in time, will it be based upon a real estate appraisal, less whatever the diminution is?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly, it's supposed to be fair market value, but, you know, the, uh, the value of the, of the property is, you know, lessened by the contamination. So, you know, it would be, I'm sure, in that neighborhood, uh, in terms of, of, uh, of what the value of it was, and, and it would be subject to whatever directions that the City Council might choose to.
Okay, all right, let, let me phrase the question, okay, will we have real estate appraisal, the base, whatever sale on that we're gonna do for the property?
Certainly have that ability.
Okay, all right.
Because we know what property next door to it, just so, because it just, we, we allowed it to sell.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, we're, you know, we're certainly, right now, we're not doing anything other than indicating that the opinion does say that we have the authority to transfer, and this permits us to go forward with the grants. If it at such, such a time, you know, we either are not awarded the grants or choose not to accept it, then we always have that opportunity. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, we accept and file on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. Yes.
Uh, Major Jackson, uh, would you want to approach the podium? I, uh, understand that, uh, your, uh, uh, opportunity to enjoy a little of our real estate was beneficial, and we're glad to have you back.
Thank you, sir. If anybody's been listening to the news, uh, today especially, this is, um, very appropriate since we've, uh, opened up a major assault in Fallujah. And we did some training in October out at the old Cotton Gin facility, and this is our thank you to the city and to the mayor for allowing us to do that, and I, if you would, sir, I'd like to read it. Uh, subject letter of appreciation, India Company, Third Battalion, 23rd Marines, would like to recognize and give its sincere appreciation to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, for its support of training conducted by India Company on the first through the third of October 2004. The city's support of India Company was instrumental to the completion of an extremely successful two-day training evolution. The facilities, time, and personnel you donated to our training at the old Cotton Gin was critical to the realistic and visually driven training we performed. The support you provided with regards to security of our forces by the presence of the North Little Rock Police is greatly appreciated. We are grateful for their service and diligence. By your actions, you directly contributed to the combat readiness and efficiency of our unit. The city's selflessness and willingness to support this training speaks volumes of the patriotism and respect your city has for the men and women in uniform and our country. We are proud to be a part of this outstanding community. Thank you again, C.B. Jackson.
Thank you very much, we sure appreciate it, and it's just, it's the least we could do, and just let us know whenever we, uh, whenever the phone rings, we'll answer and we'll be here.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Major, we appreciate it, and, uh, and again, what, uh, it's, it's, we consider it's the least that we have an opportunity to be of help, so just keep us informed and let us know anything that we can do. We're, uh, we're proud and, uh, and proud, uh, of our unit and our armed forces, thank you. Uh, Katia, uh, if you want to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, Jan Scholl's daughter wants to, uh, uh, address us, and I'm gonna make a proclamation.
Um, Mayor Hayes, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Katia Lejuna. I am a member of the Mayor's Youth Council and a ninth grader at East Campus. My start something project for the council is called Hope's Miracle. I have promised to raise three thousand dollars to help an Arkansas child be adopted. I have also promised to speak out for adoption at every chance I'm given. I'm here tonight to tell you that November is a National Adoption Month. I was adopted when I was eleven from Ekarinburg, Russia. And you, Mayor Hayes, were one of the first people that I met when I came here. You attended the youth council meeting to welcome me home. I wish that all of the five hundred kids in Arkansas who are ready for adoption could be so lucky. Every child deserves a loving home. I know that you love your grandchild a lot. Just imagine if something happened to all of her family. You will, you would want a good home for her. No one comes into this world expecting they need to be adopted. They, there are many older children, just like me, who need loving parents. I'm here tonight to ask everyone who can hear my voice to consider adoption. I'd like to give you three reasons. Number one, these kids need parents to help them understand that what has happened to them, it's not their fault, and it's not fair, but they can still have a good life and make a big difference. Second, they deserve a chance to show what they have to offer to the world. And third, and most important, as my adopted brother says, you can save a life, and I might add, you don't have to change a diaper. Please consider opening your hearts and home to a child, or supporting those who, who want to. I'd like to say that I'm really, really grateful for being adopted. An adopted child can still have a good life. Before I quit, I'd like to recognize Bill Borling, the Director of the Families Are Special, the agency that helped my mom bring me home. Thank you for your time.
Let me, uh, hold on just a second, let's give Katia. Is Jan, Jan not with us tonight? Oh, Bill, you want to stand up? Say, say hello to us, we certainly appreciate. Bill is, uh, uh, is, is, has been a member of the community for a long time, right across from, uh, the, uh, high school, and, uh, we appreciate the work you and, uh, and, and all your folks do up there, Bill, thank you. Uh, let me, uh, let me just add, I don't think that, you know, the, the various Juarez's that are here would tell anywhere close to the story that, that we've just heard, and, uh, and, and we can tell you how much we appreciate you being a member of our community and on the Mayor's Youth Council, and how much your mother, Jan Scholl, means to all of us, and particularly what she does with the Mayor's Youth Council. So, let me just, uh, uh, tell you, uh, that you are a shining example of, uh, of how much, uh, a, a lot of love and some guidance and, and certainly, uh, uh, some, uh, energy and intellect on your part have made our community a lot better. So, recognition of, uh, of this month, let me proclaim, uh, the month of, uh, November is National Adoption Month of the city of North Little Rock, and urge all of the citizens of our community to observe this month with programs and activities to honor adopted families and to participate in efforts to find permanent homes for waiting children. Therefore, I proclaim, uh, this day, uh, the, uh, eighth day of November, uh, in the year 2004 is National Adoption Month. Uh, thank you very much, and we sure appreciate it. Okay, Sandra Taylor Smith, Carrie Bradmer, Herman Shirley, y'all have, uh, a, uh, opportunity to share with us, uh, volumes, we'll say, or maybe, maybe that may be repraising, share with us a volume.
A volume. We wanted to officially present to the City Council and our elected officials the, their first copy of the new North Little Rock history book. I just got it last week, we're very, very excited, I'm anxious for y'all to look at this. And thank you for the opportunity to have had to work on this.
This involves about, uh, three years of research, gathering photographs, uh, and just general hard work, and I think all of you will be, uh, pleased if you, uh, get a copy, uh, they're here, they're on sale, uh, and, uh, we, uh, we think everybody should have one, every home should have one in North Little Rock. Uh, this is a real historical event to have this in, and, uh, hope everybody will get one.
Herman, we thank you and Sandra Taylor, I know the, uh, the, the ink and pen in large measure was Carrie Bradmer. Carrie, you want to comment? And, uh, we, uh, we sure appreciate your zeal and, uh, and enthusiasm, and we look forward to, uh, uh, reviewing and, uh, and enjoying, uh, the, uh, opposite shore.
Well, Mayor, I'm glad to have had the opportunity to have done this research project and the writing. Uh, it, I learned a lot, and, uh, realized too that there's a lot I don't know about North Little Rock history, there's always more to do, and unfortunately, one volume, it can't get it all in there. We have many, many, uh, photographs, uh, that would be of great interest, we could only get about a hundred and sixty-five in there, so there are some of the best we have, but not all of them. Uh, we'll say the books, uh, will be on sale at, uh, uh, Clerk's Office, also at the History Commission, and will be, hopefully interesting some of the bookstores in town to, uh, carry the book as well.
Thank you very much, thank all of you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're, we're probably gonna have, you know, some different events that help promote that, uh, you know, some signings, uh, uh, some things that, uh, will help share the story and make sure people are aware of what all we're interested in, what all we have done, and, uh, and, you know, point toward the future. We appreciate what y'all do, thank you very much. Is Mr. Matthews, Hal Matthews here? Oh, there you are, Hal, we're glad to see you. I, I tell you what, I'll have to, I'll have to remember this, this, uh, resolution commending you for many years of service to the city of North Little Rock, it's been on the calendar for now about three meetings, so we, we talk about you every meeting, and...
Five.
Five meetings?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. No! It was a long volleyball game. Let me, uh, without objection, call out an order of Resolution 0474. Ms. Whitby, would you read it?
Yes, sir, a resolution commending Hal Matthews for many years of service to the city of North Little Rock.
Why don't we go ahead and read it in full?
Whereas Hal Matthews, while President of the North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce, worked to establish the North Little Rock Development Corporation, and whereas Hal Matthews has led the North Little Rock Economic Development Corporation since its creation, and has overseen the recruitment and expansion of numerous businesses and vital economic development actions and accomplishments, such as the creation of the I-440 Industrial Park, and whereas the North Little Rock Economic Development Corporation has worked closely and successfully with the city of North Little Rock to promote and facilitate our city's economic development. And whereas Hal Matthews continues to establish himself as a crucial member of the community's economic development team, including serving as leader of the eleven county Central Arkansas Economic Development Alliance, which has become an established regional economic development marketing, recruiting, and planning organization, and whereas at its recent state convention, the Arkansas Economic Developers honored Hal Matthews for his many economic development accomplishments as their volunteer economic developer of the year for the second congressional district. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. The city of North Little Rock, Arkansas commends Hal Matthew for his many years of immeasurable volunteer service and success in growing and development of the economy of the city of North Little Rock to the benefit of its residents and visitors, and that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Have a motion. Motion. Second. Motion made and seconded. Uh, Ms. Whitby, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, unanimous, uh, let's give Hal a hand of applause, thank you. We, uh, we, we certainly know the Matthews name, uh, and, 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 and the family that Hal comes from, but, you know, Hal Starr is, 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 if not the brightest, certainly, well, he is the brightest, uh, and, and we sure appreciate, you know, what you do above and beyond, uh, your energy, enthusiasm, and zeal for this community, and particularly as your, uh, helps, as you, as you've helped shepherd the, uh, EDC, the Economic Development Corporation. Hal, uh, our, our gratitude is sincere, our appreciation is longstanding, and, uh, we are glad you're a part of our community, once again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
There you go. You're welcome.
I'll, I'll be very brief, uh, thank you very much for this recognition, I appreciate it. I'd be remiss in, uh, not thanking, uh, the mayor and the City Council for this last fourteen years of your great support. It wouldn't be possible, uh, to do the things that we do without it. I'd also like to thank my Board of Directors, they're a great group of guys, uh, and our Executive Director, Mr. Todd Larson, he's one of the best in the business. He's, um, invaluable to the economic development efforts here in North Little Rock. We've done a lot over the fourteen years, and, uh, I think in the future we'll be able to, uh, equal those, or double them, at least in the next fourteen years, I don't know whether I'll be there or not, but, uh, it's been a nice fourteen years, it went by fast, and, uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Hal.
Y'all have a nice day.
Uh, Ms. Whitby, I think we're on the public hearings, uh, we have the... Uh, that's true too, we can go ahead and do the special call, uh, would you publish a special call, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir, this is a letter dated November 3rd, 2004, Honorable Members of the City Council regarding special council meeting. Dear Members of the City Council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM on November 8th, 2004, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. Number one, an ordinance allowing a special use for a group housing shelter in a C4 zone for certain property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, sponsored for consideration only by Alderman Olin Thomas. Number two, an ordinance allowing a special use for an outdoor thrift sales in a C4 zone for certain property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, sponsored for consideration only by Alderman Olin Thomas. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, and this is signed by all eight council members.
Uh, Alderman Thomas, which place?
Yeah, I'd certainly like to call it, and I'd like to speak about it if I could, a moment.
All right, it's called the first one?
Yes.
Would you read the first one, Ms. Whitby?
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a group house and shelter in a C4 zone for certain real property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Alderman.
Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council, these people are working very hard in this area. I know, uh, some of the people that, uh, are here and they want to speak as well, but I know they've, uh, it means so much to them that many of them have even, uh, mortgaged their homes, they've done a lot of things, they've, to make this, uh, project a reality. And I'd like to, uh, them to speak tonight, and then if anyone has questions, they could ask them questions.
Uh, we really need to get this before, so...
Okay.
Is there, is there... Got it. Go ahead, uh, I'll, that's your introduction, go ahead and make your comments.
Yes, sir. The Mayor, I'm Garland Hampton, uh, bookkeeper and assistant administrator for Holy Anointing. This is Sister Lawanna, Lawanna McCully Johnson, President and CEO of Holy Anointing. Uh, the information that I mailed out to you all, gave you more detailed information on Holy Anointing and its transitional shelter, Joshua Training Center for Men. We currently house parolees from the ADC for their transitional housing plans. Uh, Holy Anointing has been in operation since 2001. Uh, Pastor Charles Johnson, former Pastor Charles Johnson started the facility, and you all gave him a special use permit in 2001. Uh, the facility was housing homeless addicted men, drug and, for drug and alcoholists at that time, and we agree with some of the statements that were made in the past that there were problems there and then. Pastor Charles Johnson is no longer associated with Holy Anointing, he has been, uh, removed by the Board of Directors for conduct, unbecoming a pastor, and he's currently serving a ten year sentence in the Arkansas Department of Corrections for forgery. Uh, his wife, Mrs. Lawanna Johnson, is now President and CEO, and she has changed the facility, changed the image of the facility. Every city official that has come through there recently has noticed a 360 degree change. The information that I provided to you explained our program, and we're praying that you will, uh, renew our permit in Sister McCully's name so that we can continue to operate and serve the community.
Yes, ma'am, you got any comments?
He says all.
Uh, which pleasure?
Of course, um, I would like to say too, I know for, for a fact that, uh, that Pastor Johnson took advantage of, uh, of the wife, and I know that there's, there's homes in mortgages, that a lot of things that, that, uh, have been, uh, mortgaged to make that facility go, and, uh, so I'd like to move, to be, remove this spending place on a second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, on the motion.
Gibson. Yildin. Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a group house and shelter in a C4 zone for certain real property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
I'd again like to move that rules may spend it in place on third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson. Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance, an ordinance allowing a special use for a group house and shelter in a C4 zone for certain real property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson.
I'm sorry?
Mayor?
I've got a couple of questions. All right.
Hey, Charlie. All right. Okay. Mayor, I'm, I'm just curious what Mr. Gibson's objection is or concern.
My objection is the same one, you've got, you've got a building that's fifty foot wide and a hundred and five foot deep, that you're gonna house fifty people, and you're gonna eat them, everything in a, in a space that's, uh, less inside. I mean, I've, I've made that kind of a whole, uh, that you, you, that's fifty people in a very small space, and we're, there's no timeline of saying, we'll try this for thirty to five years and it's a problem, we've already had a problem there once, I'm assuming we're not gonna have another problem again, but we had a major problem. And part of it was the person who run it, but the other part of it was the people in the back.
May I say?
And, and so, that's why I've, I've said this, a lot of people in a very small space.
Did Alderman, Witcher still has a clause?
Can you answer my question?
All right, Alderman, Height.
Okay, they've been, and, y'all, have y'all been operating there since 2001, is that, that correct?
That's correct.
Did we grant them a special use in 2001 for this?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and the reason for the, coming back and asking for another special use is change of ownership, is that, is that the reason?
The, uh, we came for a permit to operate a pallet shop, and Commissioner, uh, Albert Harris, Harris brought up the point that Pastor Johnson was no longer President and CEO, therefore, the permit needs to be changed as far as the applicant of record, and therefore, we went through the process to, to make that change.
Okay.
And, uh, based on the prior Alderman's comments, as I said, the prior clientele that we tried to serve were homeless addicted men. The problems that they, they caused, because they were not truly ready to change, the problems that he was referring to did happen. That led us to change our clientele, because these men, if they're not ready to stop doing drugs and stop doing alcohol, just like now, it's winter time, they'll start flocking to our facility just wanting to get out of the cove and not wanting to change their lives, so we don't accept them. We're now accepting parolees who have gone through the changes, uh, are under the jurisdiction We're now accepting parolees who have gone through the changes, are under the jurisdiction of the Little Rock Parole Office and the Department of Community Corrections. They're required to maintain a job and stay drug-free, and so our clientele has changed to the point where we have a more stable student population.
So they've entered a program of rehabilitation and have been, and gone through the Little Rock Office of Parole?
They've actually been in prison. They've been released from prison.
They've been in prison, released from prison, and they're...
Excuse me. They're doing their transitional housing plans at our facility. Their minimum stay is three months. Some have to stay six months. They have to stay as long as the parole office say they can stay before they can go back out into society.
Thank you.
Alderman, Thomas, and then Alderman Robinson.
I think I'm right here. You own all of the property. You own all the property where Napa is.
Yes, sir.
I know Alderman Gibson was concerned about the space, but you own all of that land, all the property, the old Kroger store and all of it, and I was out there today, and it seemed to be a very clean operation to me, so that's the reason that I was trying to help them, because I know their interest is right, and they're trying to do the right thing.
Alderman Robinson.
How many men do you have now?
Currently, we have 25 men in-house.
You have...
Twenty-five. The parole office is processing an additional 20 parole plans for men who are waiting to be released. As the men move out, I notify the parole office that we have space for more men, and they're constantly rotating in and out.
That's right.
And the way the program works, as I say, we house them for their transitional housing plan. Once one, two, three move out, or unfortunately, if some get put out or kicked out, I notify the parole office that they can now process another plan, because there are men backed up in prison waiting for places to go. We do not accept sex offenders or prisoners who require electronic monitoring. So from the standpoint of us having a stable population or a number of students, it's going to be a continuous flow, because, as I say, there are men backed up in prison with no place to go. And we are approved facility by the Department of Community Corrections.
Who determine how many people that you could keep in your facility?
The city of North Little Rock. The prior ordinance gave us 50 people based on the space of the dormitory.
We gave you that?
Yes, ma'am. City code enforcement measured the dormitory and said you could have no more than 50 men in here, in this amount of space. And that's only in the dormitory area. We have the rest of the building is a recreation area, TV room, dining room, front lobby, and the chapel is the old Kroger store itself, so... And the office is right next to it, and then the Napa store. So it's a large facility, and it houses the 50 men with no problem. And like I say, with our change in students, the atmosphere there has changed. People don't even know we're actually there.
And then is Alderman Vestal, then Alderman Gibson, then Alderman Yildin.
The gentlemen that are residents at your facility, are they required to have drug tests?
Say that again, please.
Are they required to have drug tests to their parole?
Yes. We do random drug tests ourselves, and the parole office drug tests them. On our random drug test, anybody testing positive... Our rule changed recently from a three-strike system to a total zero tolerance. Anyone testing positive or bringing alcohol in the facility is immediately dismissed, and it is reported to the parole office in writing, and then they have more problems to deal with, because, as I say, they are under the jurisdiction of the Department of Community Corrections. They're still property of the state.
Thank you.
Alderman Gibson?
I'll go back and answer your question. I understand my mic wasn't on. There's no way out of this. We did this back in 2001. It could... They went through a total series of problems, and had they not really applied, I mean, there's no way out. I mean, this thing can go on forever, and if there's problems out there, they're just problems. They're zoned, they're allowed to be in business doing this, and that's my real problem with it. They own the piece of paper they gave us on original ordinance, they gave us where they were going to house the men. They would hold 50 people in a dormitory. We had 50 people in a military dormitory, probably in a smaller space, but there was thousands of acres out there to run off your energy. Is that there is no way out of this. If we approve this, this is a special use as long as Ms. McCauley is running this, and it doesn't even mention her, and somewhere down through here, I'm sure, doesn't even mention her by name, even in here. So therefore, as long as it just calls for a group housing shelter in C4, not a special use for it. Her name's up in the first whereas, but as we know, those whereas disappear as we go through the system. So I have a concern about it. I voice that concern, and we can pass it, and as always, I've said before, I accept the will of this council, but there is no way out of this thing if it does go bad. And it's on a street that we're just spending, us and the state are spending about millions of dollars to redo, and I just think it's a bad precedent to set on that corner going into a major neighborhood.
Ma'am. Alderman Yildin?
You know, there were problems last time with the people in the operation, what was going on in the business, okay? But that's not the problem that I remember. Those aren't the problems I remember. The problems that I remember were with the building. So I would like the fire chief, or if the fire marshal's here, that'd be great, maybe the fire chief could help us, and come up here, as I asked last time, and tell us about that, because, y'all, that's where the big problem is. And so if he could do that, or... Well, he's not here. Malden's here. You're not familiar?
I'm not familiar with Malden. I couldn't speak to it.
And well, I can speak to it. You know, horrible situation. I talked to the chief about it. I've talked to the fire marshal about it. They never made their improvements. There's not a sprinkler system in the building.
Excuse me. There is sprinkler.
There is a sprinkler system now?
Yes. We have passed fire inspections the last two to three years.
Well, the conversations that I had with the chief was that, you know, it was not a good idea. So, you know, if they did put the sprinkler system in since then, you know, that's good, but it's just, it's not big enough, and there's just, you know, problems as far as fire and rescue are concerned.
Alderman, Alderman Robinson, and then Alderman Height?
At the planning commission meeting, if I remember correctly, code enforcement indicated that they had cleared up a lot of the problems and that they were in compliance. The fire chief indicated, I believe, that they were also in compliance.
Correct.
That there were some problems at first, but that they had made some corrections and that they were in compliance. If I remember the last planning meeting, Robert Voels would have to verify that, but it seemed like that is what was said.
Let's get Robert up here and verify it.
Okay.
Yes, I recall. I do wish the fire marshal were here, but he was at the planning commission meeting, and we did have some problems early on. I think those have been addressed. They did move originally from the Kroger building over to this smaller space to remedy some of those problems, but I think the building has been resolved.
Are we... Is this special use for the whole space or for the whole building?
I think it's for that address.
Just for that small area?
No. I think it's for...
For the whole?
Entire.
The entire building?
Napa building and all, then.
Yeah.
I think it's to the address, and the address is...
The address is the whole building, even though they're not using the whole building.
Alderman Robinson has the floor.
Okay.
Well, now, my understanding is that right now, we're just addressing the section, the dormitory section where the men will live. We're not addressing the entire piece of property.
If that's correct, is that what it says, Mr. City Attorney?
If you take a look at the map, there's three addresses, 3705, 3711, and 3719 Broadway. The rezoning is just for 3719.
Okay.
So the Napa store and the store next to the Napa store. I'm not sure what that is.
Go to the description in section one. You're going 270 foot.
It describes the entire track.
You've got some pretty good spaces there. I mean, the numbers are big. They're more than 50 foot, is what I'm saying. It's a 50 by 80 building or 50 by 90 building, and this is 249 foot along one line, so it's got to be awful close to the entire... I got the old legislation.
Yeah. Well, my opinion is you go by the particular map, more particularly described, and it's very shaded in. It excludes 3705 and 3711, and so there's...
It's not attached to this. That's attached to the old ordinance.
No, it's attached to this.
It's a special call.
Special call it is. Alderman Height?
I was gonna ask...
Are you finished, Alderman?
No, I'm not. Well, I'm a bit confused now, because I'm sitting here, I'm looking at both of these zoning requests, and the shelter is 3719 East Broadway.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what we're discussing, talking about making it a C4. And I know we're not entertaining the other right now, but it has the same address. So what are we doing, Paul?
Don't say that.
We're not rezoning anything. We're simply... There's two pieces of legislation up to seek a special use to operate certain things, and that is the halfway house or transitions house, as well as the outdoor thrift store area. Those two particular things.
So once we... If the group home passes...
Okay.
Does the outdoor thrift pass? Because it has the same address. We're talking about a C4.
It's a separate piece of legislation.
Okay.
And if you notice, the thrift shop is...
We're dealing with a special use on the dormitory aspects of it, and we're dealing with a special use on...
At the same address.
At the same address, I assume, in front of the other.
Yeah, and we have the same address for the outdoor thrift shop, but obviously, that's an outdoor area. There's not an address to a part of a parking lot.
Okay.
Can I clarify that for you? 3705 is the Napa store. 3711 is our office facility. That's where we have thrift stores set up at the conference room there. 3719 is the dormitory area, and the rest of that building, being the same address, 3719, the other, the last end of where the Kroger store used to be is the chapel. So it's four separate areas, but the two you're considering are the 3719 for the dormitory. 3711 in front of our office is where we hope to operate this thrift activity.
And I hadn't been out there, but you're telling me that the whole store has sprinkler system in it?
The dormitory area is required to have a sprinkler system.
I understand that, but this right here says 3719, and 3719's the whole thing. So you haven't sprinkled the whole building, and that's where I'm coming from.
The requirement was that the living area for the men have a sprinkler system. The dormitory has sprinkler system through the dining room area, and the kitchen area has an ancil fire system. So that was the requirement, that had to have the sprinkler system, the living area and the dining room area. And like I say, the kitchen has an ancil fire protection system in it as far as the cooking facility.
Okay.
Now, Alderman Height, and then Alderman Thomas.
I was just going to add, too. Alderman Gibson over there said there's no way out. With the help of the city attorney, can we amend in a way out on this?
I mean, there's the way out. This is not a rezoning.
I understand that.
This is a special use, and if you don't want them to have the special use anymore, revoke it.
No, I'm not saying that not to have a special use, but if they fail to comply down the road, we have a way out.
Yeah.
Revoking it.
If you fail to comply with any special use, it can be revoked.
But we haven't put any special conditions in here, though, for that, do we?
You have to meet with state, federal, county, and city requirements, so if they violate the housing code, they can be revoked.
Then we do have a way out, then. It's already built into it, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the key is, I don't want to speak for Alderman Gibson, if you rezone a property, say, C4, then any business that's appropriate in C4 can go in. A special use is where you can go in and revoke it. Matter of fact, this transition housing or housing shelter, however you want to call it, is not even really recognized in our zoning ordinance. That's why we require a special use, because of its unique character. But it's something clearly the city council can do, can revoke a special use permit.
I ask a question.
Let me ask you a quick question, then Alderman Thomas, then Alderman Gibson. Can you put a time limitation on this special use, and it expires without further action by the council, in a year or two years?
I don't see why not.
Alderman Thomas, and then Alderman Gibson.
I just wanted to remind the council that aid of the planning commissioner approved this. One of those commissioners has worked for the Department of Corrections. He's very familiar with it, and I can't imagine why that we'd question the planning commission here. We usually don't, but in this case here, I think that we're being a little over cautious.
Alderman Gibson?
Well, in all these years, I've never seen the planning commission pass something for consideration only. Never happened. Number two, my question is, who can take away a special use?
City council.
And in 24 years, have you ever seen one of them done, Mr. Thomas?
Well, if we wanted to, we could.
And I've not seen... And so I want to... One of the things that we've had a lot of problem with is that, and I'll use a couple of examples, we took a church up in the middle of a neighborhood in Levy and special used it for a daycare center, and then three years later, it's out of business, and the weeds have grown up, and we don't know how to undo it, you know? And so we had a situation here. They operated a facility out there that didn't meet the requirements of federal, state, county, and city requirements, but nobody bothered. We've made numerous police calls out there. We did a lot of things, but nobody ever brought up the idea of being able to revoke their special use and say, "You can't do that anymore." And so we talked about it many times of going in and on an annual basis, checking every special use, and we even have trouble finding all the records of all the special uses we have out there. And I want a way out, and the way out is, is that, you know, it's got to be checked on an annual basis, at least an annual basis, that it meets all of the things in the city, that they've not run over men, that they've not run over the amount of people they have out there, that they've not moved people into an unsprinkled area. We need to be able... This is breaking absolutely new ground in the city of North Little Rock. And I just...
I need it.
I don't know how to do what we need to do, and obviously, this is a special call. There was a similar piece of ordinance that's on the regular agenda. This one, I'll have to note, doesn't have the map attached to it that shows that... The second one, the thrift shop one has it. It's not attached to this one as a special, as... And it doesn't even refer to an attachment A or Exhibit A in it, in this one. 3719 is the old Kroger store and the additional property to it, so it's the entire piece of property we're rezoning for this use.
So, Alderman Robinson?
My thing is, since people are being housed there, would you all have a problem with the city coming in once a year, doing a check?
The city does come in.
The city does?
They come in and check code enforcements. We have annual fire inspections. I have reports in my desk every time the city... The health department comes and checks the kitchen. We're scrutinized every year, annually, by code enforcement, by fire department, and by the health department.
We didn't show them, no?
Okay.
So it's not... And as I say, we are a nonprofit organization from the standpoint of... Mrs. McCauley Johnson is the president and CEO. We are authorized by the Internal Revenue Service, which is 501(c)(3). We don't meet those qualifications, we can lose that status. So as far as, Ms. McCauley does not own the facility. Five oh one(c)(3) stands alone from the standpoint of the government when they, when they grant you that status. Therefore, if we don't meet the city requirements, the health department requirements, we can be shut down. So there is an out, there's always an out. If we're not meeting the required code enforcements, health requirements, and fire departments, we, our special use, as Attorney Susskey said, can be pulled. So there is a check.
Any further discussion? Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
It's been read three times, and there's no motions pending.
All right, we got a motion? I'm sorry.
More special use, what is the proper address?
I don't know how to amend it. Thirty-seven nineteen, it's the entire piece of, it's the entire old Kroger store, best I can tell, and maybe even more than that.
Well, now, that ain't what our city attorney's telling us.
No, that's not. Yeah, put it this way, I'm not sure exactly what all the legal description covers, you know, based upon what was given to us by planning. But if you take a look at the map, there appears to be at least three buildings with addresses. Thirty-seven oh five, thirty-seven eleven, and thirty-seven nineteen. And I assume the shaded area of the group home is a part of thirty-seven nineteen.
Actually, the map that I have from the original drawing, thirty-seven oh five is a Napa store. Thirty-seven eleven is our office facility. Thirty-seven seventeen is the actual dorm address. Thirty-seven nineteen is the chapel of the old Kroger store. So four addresses in the script.
Then we need to correct it.
We amend out the legal and just refer to that as-
To thirty-seven seventeen?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven seventeen is the dorm area.
Just amend out the legal and straighten it up, so we don't have any questions.
They're gonna use the rest of that for the same thing.
I know they are.
So my recommendation would be under section one, to amend it from thirty-seven nineteen to thirty-seven seventeen, East Broadway, North Rock, Arkansas, be a more particularly described as exhibit A.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Say, is there a second? On the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
I'd like to move it. No, I don't know.
Well, we got, we got a motion in there, so is there a second to that motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Second.
Another procedural question, okay, Art. Did we amend out the description?
Yes.
Yes.
But we, we did leave in C map dashes as exhibit A.
It's got a legal description on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your point, Alderman Gibson?
My point is, is that we still have not made this in Ms. McCauley's name. I mean, is that it's just in nobody's name. It's up in the, whereas it says her name, but down in special use is allowed to, Ms. Iwanda?
Lawanna.
Lawanna McCauley.
Is that something where you want today?
We normally put the-
Normally, we go back to the application, and whereas, I don't ever recall putting it in the section, but we certainly can if we want.
But we've always been told it goes with the people.
All right.
So a special use is allowed for Ms. Lawanna S. McCauley for a group home? So after allowed, add in the word, that her name is Lawanda S. McCauley.
Why are you doing that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Just one second.
Motion on the motion, all right. Paul, this is not gonna make any difference, because they're operating as the Holy Anointing-
Holy Anointing Deliverance Church.
Deliverance Church.
Who made the application?
Put it this way, I gave the opinion, if the original application was in Holy Anointing's name, not the Reverend Johnson, we wouldn't even be sitting here today. But apparently, it was made through Mr. Johnson himself.
See here, there's the applicant. This is the copy of the, of the thing that went before the planning commission. Who's the applicant?
Applicant, Ms. Lawanna S. McCauley.
Not the church.
So put it this way, I mean, if you want to restrict it more, then I'd have it in the individual's name. And if she's no longer a part of it, she loses the special use.
Well, I would think that we'd need to do it in the name of the applicant. So I would, I hear a second to Alderman Thomas's motion.
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
All right, now-
I'd like to move it.
Now, I have a question.
I have a question.
Okay, now, since the planning commission approved this and sent it up here for consideration only, does this mean we have to send it back to them for approval?
No.
No.
Not to do anything.
Okay.
Any other questions, Alderman Yildin?
Robert, or the city attorney, either one. How many times we pass a rezoning or a special use without a legal description?
There is a legal attached.
Put it this way, there is not a legal description to the building. The legal description is the lot that this sits on. And so as a result, what we're sitting or doing is rezone. I mean, we can certainly go pay for a surveyor to go get the particular legal description of the footprint of the building. I don't ever recall if we've ever done that. Generally, you say an area, and you say, for instance, you got a shopping center-
Let me just interrupt you. We've been, I mean, I wanna get to votes. In your opinion, what we're voting on, legal?
I believe if it went to court, everybody will clearly understand what we're talking about. Yes.
I'm gonna rule Alderman Thomas's motion in order. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? On the motion?
Gibson?
As this is on a motion to pass the legislation as amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Without Ms. McCauley's name?
It's there.
Ms. McCauley's name is-
Yeah, we voted on that and amended it in.
We did.
You're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Gibson votes yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
For the group home, yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Second, what's your pledge on the second?
I wanna call it as well.
All right, would you read that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance allowing special use-
Y'all can sit down if you want. I mean, you're welcome to stand there, but you-
This is an ordinance allowing special use for an outdoor thrift sales in a C4 zone for certain real property located at thirty-seven nineteen East Broadway in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
I'd like to move for adoption.
Move, suspend the rules?
Yes, I'm pretty on the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. And ordinance allowing special use for an outdoor thrift sales in a C4 zone for certain real property located at thirty-seven nineteen East Broadway in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Before we go to that motion, Alderman, Alderman Robinson, we have a record of, you know, listening to the debate before we go for a motion, suspend the rules. So Alderman Robinson?
I have some real concerns about having an outdoor thrift on East Broadway. The people in the area have asked that their aldermen's clean up East Broadway. And there are some strong concerns about an outdoor thrift store, especially, I mean, even though you're asking for it to only be on Saturdays from eight to three. But there are some strong concerns in the area, and the people in the area have said, "Clean up East Broadway." We want East Broadway to be a scenic route. And that's one of the things they've asked for, and they've asked us to do that. So I don't think that an outdoor thrift store mayor is what the people in the area want.
Okay, we're on motion, suspend the rules. Any other comment?
This is for the second time.
This is, you know, put it on third reading. Alderman Thomas, do you have a second on that motion? Motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
See, I made the motion to suspend the rules.
All right, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
All right, motion made, you second it. On the motion, suspend the rules, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
And ordinance allowing special use for an outdoor thrift sales in a C4 zone for certain real property located at thirty-seven nineteen East Broadway in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Let me, before, before we call it, let me just indicate that, you know, that I share Alderman Robinson's concerns. I would not oppose that if there was a year's limitation placed in that, and then you'd have to come forward as council and, and, and seek affirmative action, or it would expire. Absent that, then I would have to oppose this legislation.
Well, Mayor, we could agree to that. This thrift idea, as I mentioned in our letter, started when we went to the Salvation Army for a request for a hygiene donation. And they, they were moving their warehouse at the time, and they offered to refer donations to us so that we might resell them to raise money for the ministry. Once we accepted that, and it jumped off real good, and we were only, from the standpoint, as, as we were unloading items and sitting them out front till we could move them inside, and actually, we don't have a lot of room to store large items in, people just started coming through and wanting to buy them. A postman walked by one day and saw a black refrigerator and wanted to buy it. And so we've just been doing this to try to raise money for the ministry. If you want to put that stipulation on it, we'll deal with it.
Alderman Thomas, do you have any objection to that? Mr. City Attorney, would you put that in somewhere that this special use would expire in a 12-month period? Or let's just do it this way, expire December 31st of 'oh five, unless the council acts affirmative, that's 14 months, if it's adopted.
However, in section two, Mark's suggestion is created, section two, I guess, paragraph E, item E, that the outdoor thrift store shall expire on December 31st, 2005, unless reapproved by the city council.
Alderman Thomas, do you mind making that motion?
I'll make that motion, and I'd like to also say at the same time that it's not right up on Broadway. This is some distance back, it's maybe 150 feet or so off from Broadway. So it's not right up on the street, as it might think.
Wait a minute, let's get a second on that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now we're on discussion on the motion to amend, Alderman Yildin.
There's a Napa store right next to it, and you're gonna have all this stuff out front. Need I say more? That's it.
Has the Napa store objected?
No, their employees have came over and bought things.
And talk about not outside, they have.
They came over and bought things outside, and inside.
Have they been notified of this legislation?
Yes, they have.
They own Napa.
All right, motion made, you seconded on the amendment, I believe. Any further discussion on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Alderman, Vestal?
Gentlemen and ladies, the reason these two pieces of legislation were separated is because the planning commission had a real problem with the thrift store.
That's right.
And there were several comments that were made that they, people did not have too much of a problem with use, with the housing, but they had a real problem with the way the thrift store has been operating from, from the beginning. And based on that, I am not gonna support it.
Right now, we're on the motion to amend, I believe.
No, sir, it's been amended.
We passed that, okay, now we're on, oh, that's right, the floor is open.
Mayor.
One second, the floor is open right now, not for discussion, but for a motion.
Move to, move as amended.
I'm taking option.
All right, motion made for the option, is there a second?
Second.
All right, now we're on discussion on the matter.
The thrift store, is that, your hours of operation are only on Saturdays from eight to three?
Well, the outside operation would be only on Saturday, eight to three. Normally, we're open six days a week, five days a week. People just come in and look, we don't have things sitting out front during the weekdays. Saturday, we do a lot of donation pickups, because that's when our drivers can go get them. As they're unloading things, we like to leave them sitting out there. So on a night, Saturday morning, people riding by can see the product, that draws them in. Once that's over, we put it back and store it away.
You put it back in the store on, what, Saturday night, or?
Saturday evening, after three o'clock, that's what the, the, the special use is saying. We will move it all back inside.
Is that merchandise that you move back in on Saturday night available for purchase during normal business hours, inside?
Only if a customer would ask to see it. We prepare our inventory list to show them what other large items we have that aren't in the main area of the store. And if they choose to look at them, then we'll take them back to the area and let them see them, but they're not brought out.
Is that area covered?
Yes, it is.
It is covered outside?
No, not, not the outside area.
Outside area?
The area we're referring to is right in front of the office at thirty-seven eleven. And as we told the planning commissioner, the items wouldn't go further out than a parking space, than the parking space area. And like I say, when people are out yards, you know, doing yard sales and things on Saturday mornings, and they're driving around, they see the items, they stop. And as I said in my letter, in August, we made eighteen hundred dollars. In September, twelve hundred. Last month, it was eight hundred. And of course, with the change in weather, we expect it to go down. In the spring, we hope it'll pick back up, just when people are out doing yard sales, you know, shopping.
The merchandise that you have outside, is it, what is it? Describe the merchandise that's outside on the-
Various merchandise, it's usually refrigerators, washers and dryers, couches and chairs, appliances and things. Large items that, you know, like I say, people would be, that will catch your eye. It's not a lot of those little things. The little things are in the store. The little, because like I say, these are all items that were donated by people who were cleaning out their garage or giving it to Salvation Army, they referred it to us. And like I say, most of the items are workable items, and for, you know, someone buying a washing machine or dryer for thirty or forty dollars, where they can't afford to go buy a five hundred dollar, it's a bargain. And like I say, they just, they move, they were just going, just like that. And like I say, with them, with them sitting outside, the customer sees them. And like I say, it's people who are out on Saturday morning doing their yard sale and garage sale, they'd see.
We wanna be responsive, but we wanna move on, too.
Yes, sir.
My question's been answered.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion to adopt as amended. Any further discussion on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
No.
Yildin?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
Motion fails.
You got a chance to stay in business, but not outside.
All right, well, we thank you all, and I'd like to say congratulations on your reelection mayor, and all the aldermen who are also running. And we thank you for your votes tonight.
Well, we ask you all to do good work and to try to take care of that segment of our population that you work on. You've got an endorsement for that, and, and do the best you can with an inside thrift shop.
We will. Thank you all.
All right, let's go back to the regular agenda.
We've not, we've not done our public hearings yet.
Uh, no, no, we, we interrupted. So the agenda, the next item on the public hearing is regarding oh four fifty-six North Rock Residential Housing Design Review Board. That's your public hearing. Alderman Gibson, you wanna introduce that?
Yes, I'll do it. Mr., first Mr. Voelz, have you got the? Yeah, pass those out. Our five-member board met tonight to do the final, and I will basically bring these up. This would be an offer as amendment to change oh four fifty-six, there's one blank that's left in this. I do not intend to call this legislation tonight. This sets the design rules for single-family and duplex housing. The main items in it is that it, the, have at least a four twelve pitch roof, have a 12-inch eve, the siding be the customary siding that has a paved driveway, has a front entrance, and that the all sides of the fixture, of the structure shall be at least have a width of 20 feet. The foundation shall be solid and continuous around the primary, around the perimeter of the primary structure, and all elevations shall include windows, doors, and other openings. And then, and then there is a, there's a checklist that staff will use. Section two will either establish the board or set up a new board to do that with. We go into how much of your front yard can be paved, how about decks, accessory buildings, and those kind of things. All I wanna do is make the amendment tonight. We've met four meetings so far, and I'd like to amend it in tonight, have, continue the public hearing at the next meeting, and hopefully try to pass it on the 22nd.
I'll take that as a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion on Alderman Thomas?
You're not satisfied with the three twelve pitch?
The, the committee was not satisfied with the three twelve pitch. We went to, and I'll answer the question. We went to, we talked to Habitat, we talked to Youth Build, and we talked to basically everybody. And this is on the main structure, and they're building anywhere from five to six, so the four, the four minimum did not bother them. And if it doesn't, we were worried about the affordable housing side of it. And when you get down to three twelve or two twelve, you get into some of the problems we're seeing. And I believe the address is forty-five seventeen Boyer. And this, this precipitated some of this, but it, this is made so that a house will look like a house.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
No, I'm not going to.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry, I mean, I'm sorry, Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Legislation amended, Alderman Gibson's indicated that he would hold that, uh, I'll call, I'll continue the public hearing after we open it, uh, open the floor at this point. Any member of the audience here to comment on this, uh, piece of legislation?
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment, I attended two or three of the meetings that Martin chaired, and I'd like to say, the committee did a wonderful job, and the, and the items that they considered here and are proposing are good items, and, uh, and he said something about a three-twelve pitch, it won't, you know, I was in the building business, and a four-twelve should be a minimum, and I'm, I would recommend that, that we pass this or consider it, uh, because I think it's good, it's a good, uh, a good group of rules that they've put together, and Martin, he did a fine job, and thank you.
We appreciate it, and we are considering it.
Mayor, I'll throw one item in before, Mr. Ard, the one item of contention within our board was in, was three B of whether to allow asphalt driveways or not, and that's something we can discuss more at our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
I just want to agree with, I'm Jimmy Ard, and I just want to agree with Mr. Reynolds, it was a great meeting, they did a great job, and I wish you'd consider passing.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Bobby Taylor, and I'm the one that's looking at it. I guess the thing that started this, I'm still unhappy with it, and I always will be until it's moved out of there. I know, uh, Robert Roy told me tonight that he might not be able to help me on account of it already being in there, but I'm still looking for my modulant home on a concrete slab, and this thing be turned around to where I won't be looking at the back of it facing Middle Street. And, uh, until this thing is solved and this thing is gone, I'll be standing right here every council meeting, it's seven o'clock when the public comment section comes, to repeat that. I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor, anything else? Recess the public hearing until next council meeting, uh, Alderman Gibson's indication.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, next public hearing is, uh, oh-four-sixty-six, so I'll recess that for the next council meeting, oh-four-sixty-six, establishing Haley's First Edition Municipal Property Owners Improvement District, anyone here want to comment on, uh, that, uh, piece of legislation? Yes, sir.
Good evenings, Mayor, Council, uh, my name's Clint McGee, I'm attorney, I was just helping the Haley's in this, if you, uh, looked at the packet, this is a, uh, pre-lot subdivision, the Planning Commission required, uh, improvement district for the purposes of fire protection, and that's why the Haley's have gone through, through these steps.
Any questions, may I, members of council, Alderman Gibson?
You know, I guess one of my questions is that, that these, these districts have power of eminent domain, and that that always, when you transfer or you allow someone else to have that authority, that, and we have it, we're elected officials, we stand, uh, when you allow an improvement to do, a district to do that, you always have a concern with it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, uh, I don't, you know, I wouldn't know how to respond to that, other than to, to say, I mean, we're talking about a, a small area, uh, and I just don't know that that would come into play in this instance, certainly it may be more.
I guess my concern was that you, it doesn't, that doesn't mean that you've got own the eminent domain within your district, it means that you, if you need to go across someone else's property to get water to bring into there, that y'all choose where it is, and, and I, I, I just have, I don't think, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that, if state law allows it.
Again, I guess I'll overstep boundaries as, as far as addressing that, I mean, you know, that's dictated by statute, and it's, it's such that we, we, there's only one way for us to do it, and there's only really one set of rules in which it can be established and approved, uh, I mean, I don't know if there are answers or options.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, thank you very much, any other, uh, comment from any member of the public? We'll adjourn that public hearing, uh, all right, uh, public hearing regarding Maiden Street, our agenda's application for federal grant, uh, from the Environmental Protection Agency for Brownfields, uh, Michael, you want to just briefly tell us what this is?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, uh, I have a, the distinguished honor to, to, uh, present this, uh, briefing to you regarding the, uh, submission of an EPA, hi, Sir, Brownfields cleanup grant for the property known as the South, the Smart House Way property, the Southern parcel. Uh, tonight, we have, uh, members.
Everyone's, uh, most certain clarification, this is three acres.
I have a map, if you'd care for me to pass it out?
I don't, I think everybody knows.
Okay. Uh, tonight, we have environmental consultants to the city and Main Street, David Hopkins, uh, with the Genesis Environmental Consultants, as well as Tammy Hyman, Heinem, Technical Administrative Support Branch Manager for ADEQ, and Amanda Gregory, Support Program Manager for the ADEQ Brownfields program. Suffice it to say that we're applying for a Brownfields grant to provide cleanup funds to clean up the contaminants on the Southern parcel, the grant is due in EPA's hands on Friday, and we are required to prepare, uh, public hearings and public community notices to receive public comment on our grant. Um, I have a, a small briefing, a short briefing, if you'd care to hear it, um, or we can go on with the public hearing and take comments from the consultants in ADEQ.
Let's, uh, unless any council member wishes, uh, we'll just take some comments, uh, from ADEQ, and then we'll, uh, offer the microphone to the public.
David? This is David Hopkins with, uh, Environmental Consultants.
Genesis Environmental Consulting was hired to evaluate data associated with the comprehensive site assessment that was performed on the property to evaluate the extent of contamination on the site, and from that evaluation to determine remediation options and cost estimates for what it would cost to remediate and clean up the site for potential redevelopment on the property.
Any, uh, anything you want to, anything that we need to know, other than, where are you in your process?
We have, uh, worked with Main Street Argent and North Little Rock in looking at those options and preparing the Brownfield grant also to submit in, uh, I believe it's on the eleventh of November, and, uh, from there, we have, uh, you know, pretty much come to some pretty good general conclusions anyway on what we think's a good remediation option for the site and for the planned future reuse of it.
Michael?
Let me introduce, uh, Chris Heeman from ADEQ for some comments, Chris.
Uh, the city of North Little Rock had requested a targeted Brownfield assessment, and we had conducted that over the summer, um, but Genesis took that information we gave them to make some of the, the information, we've been working with, with, you know, the city and Main Street Argent on this project, and the EPA grants are, this is exactly what they're for, to basically help out, get, get some cleanup done where there's not a lot of money to do so, and this works very well.
We like grants, and we want to build a ball field in that neighborhood, so.
Exactly.
You know, anything else, Michael?
No, sir.
Let me, uh, open the microphone, any questions, any comments, uh, from the public? Uh, we'll adjourn that public hearing, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, all right, now, it looks like, uh, we'll go to, uh, old business.
Yes, sir, resolution oh-four-ninety-four, Alderman Yielding and Barry.
Do we have any updates on the bids?
Uh, I don't know, brother Malden?
Uh, we should have the results, we sent them out for bids, the aero truck, and they should be in about three weeks.
Okay, thanks.
All right, just hold that.
Next item?
Ordinance oh-four-sixty-one, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson and Barry.
We're going to wake the world, we're going to hold that again, Alderman.
What's the, we're on six, we're on, we're on sixty-one?
Yes, sir. Fifty-six you amended while we had it up, so I passed it.
Fifty-six has been amended, so now we're on sixty-one, did we have any amendments to the pit bull ordinance? That's where we are, it's pit bulls there.
Oh, I'm sorry, not, not, not that I'm aware of, I, I think we can get our, uh, Mr. Grace, uh, let's go ahead.
Just one passed around.
All right, yeah, Mr. Sam, with your permission.
Alderman?
Okay, all right, I, I do have two amendments that I would propose, uh, one of those, uh, is, uh.
Wait a minute, hold on a second, I, you know, we were, I thought we were on, what are we on, uh?
On sixty-one.
Old Business.
Oh, I thought we were on fifty-six, what did we hold that?
No, fifty-six I held.
No, sir.
Okay, now, okay.
No, we pulled it, amended it, and held it.
Right, okay, now, we're on sixty-one, go ahead and, uh, and, and read it, Ms. Whitby, you wanted to amend it, is that what you were talking about? Yeah, did you read it?
No, sir.
Okay, well, that's, can't amend something we hadn't read, read it, Ms. Whitby.
This is the ordinance creating North Little Rock Municipal Code, section ten-nine-four-six, prohibited pit bull breeds of dogs within the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
All right, we're on the, uh, on the issue, uh, floor is open for amendments, Alderman Witcher?
Okay, all right, Mayor, uh, sheet was passed around with two amendments on it, the first, uh, in section ten-dash-four-six, under banning of pit bull breeds of dogs, uh, and proposing to strike in section A, item nine, any vicious dog which is found at large in violation of section ten-dash-thirty-eight, ten, forty-four, and forty-six. Uh, the reasoning, of course, is we specifically have stated, uh, that, you know, we are proposing to do away with the, the pit bulls, and if your chihuahua was out on the street loose and attacked someone, then he would fall, fall within this ordinance, uh, so for that reason, I'm proposing that change.
Say that again.
Chihuahua.
No. Say, say your reasoning, under shit your dog.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be flip, yeah, I did too. Okay, all right, i- if you will go to the revised amended ordinance in, uh, in section A. Under nine, let's see, it says, any vicious dog which is found at large in violation of sections ten, thirty-eight, comma, ten, forty-four, and forty-six, okay, uh, that would cover a multitude of dogs that is already covered by vicious dog ordinance, and since we are specifically addressing the pit bulls, I don't, it's not appropriate, but, all right, Mr. Suss?
That's correct, Alderman Gibson brought this up at the last council meeting, and I've read that about five or six times, and it's just poorly written and shouldn't even be in there, so it's my recommended, recommendation to Alderman Witcher, we just need to take that provision out.
Chihuahua.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Wait, wait, all right, Mayor, there's still, still more.
Well, on the same motion?
Okay, that's okay, let, let's, let's.
Separate it.
Okay.
All right, that's, uh, one motion, uh, he's explained his motion, there's a second on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, Alderman, let's go.
Okay, all right, the next amendment is on, uh, section one, ten, forty-six, section H. Uh, which will be a, a new H, uh, in, in, and actually, this, this is not correct, it should read, Ms. Whitby, you're going to stay with me on this one, should, it should read, as proposed, a lifetime dog license and registration, any owner of a dog allowed in the city limits pursuant to section ten-dash-four-six-B or section ten-dash-four-six-D may obtain a lifetime dog license and registration if, number one, the requirements of said subsections have been met, number two, the dog is sterilized, and, number three, this is, this is where it should change, section, let's see, sorry, uh. It could either read, comply with section D, item five, or, uh, the owner shall bring animal, well, we don't want to do that. Where a registration number assigned by the department tattooed on the animal, and said, said number shall be one inch in height and located on the abdomen near the upper inside of the right rear leg.
So are you taking out number three, you're deleting?
I'm taking out the portion, the owner's purchase implants and approved microchip for qualified veterinarian, taking that part out.
And you're adding, could you repeat that?
Okay, from, from, uh, section D, item five.
Okay.
NLRAC personnel or licensed veterinarian shall cause a registration number assigned by the department to be tattooed on the animal, said number to be one inch in height and locate on the abdomen near the upper inside of the right rear leg.
Okay.
Okay, now then, so, so you'll, you'll know why, so you'll know why, you know, this basically, uh, is a companion piece of legislation with legislation that we already have regarding registration of these animals, you know, you know, if someone is complying with this ordinance, and they're, they've had their dog tattooed, uh, and they comply with state law, you know, there's no reason having them come in every year, uh, in my opinion, to, to have a license.
Well, before we talk about that, is there a second to that?
I'll, I'll second it, because I want to discuss it with you. Mr. Witcher, one of the reasons they come in every year is to prove their vaccination, and, and these animals, obviously, they, they, whether it's a reminder or whatever, they need, they need to be vaccinated every year, and one way to do that is to come in and get vaccinated every year and get a dog license, and in getting that dog license, we have a record of that dog, and, and you don't have, and then Animal Control doesn't have to go in and ask a lot of questions or start, make a lot of stops, uh, they've got a way, there's a tag on there that tells who the owner is because it's got a license that he's gotten, there's a lot of reasons to come in every year and, and get that dog vaccinated, and whether they're implanted, implants help find it, to identify whose dog it is, but I'd like to have that animal in every year to get vaccinated and, and get his dog tags, and it's a good opportunity to just have an, an up-to-date list of where those dogs are, and that's why I speak against this section.
Alderman, uh, Yielding?
As it is right now, my dog has a microchip, and I have a lifetime license because he's sterilized, and so, but every year, I go get him rabies vaccination, and then go out there and get the license, and it is a reminder to do that, and there, I'm sure there will be a lot of people that just get your li, and, you know, and not ever get them rabies, and, and there you go, so, I don't think this is a good amendment.
Uh, we're on discussion on the amendment.
Well. What's the requirement now on all the other breeds of dogs, that if they get the microchip, they get a lifetime license?
Are they required to go out on an annual basis and get the vaccinations?
No. By state law, they still have to get vaccinated, but they do not have to go back.
These would also. Well, but what, what, what I think Alderman Yielding and Alderman Gibson are saying is that while the requirement's there, there's no sanction that would cause them to have to do that.
I don't like the present law. And I'm glad you reminded, because I'll probably come back in.
Okay, you know what?
Just a second, I think we've got a little advice coming here, Dr. Allen.
Uh, the key is, is they.
Go ahead and let everybody else know who you are.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Richard Allen, I'm a practicing veterinarian here in North Little Rock, the key is, is they still have to get the rabies vaccination and city license, it's just that it won't cost them anything. They, they still, in order to get a license from me, they have to get a rabies vaccination, so if, if they don't come and get a rabies vaccination, that not, license will not be renewed.
It doesn't say two thousand?
Even though it doesn't cost them anything.
Yeah.
The rabies vaccination does, but the license doesn't.
Everybody got that?
Why do we do it for zebras?
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment?
Mayor, you know, I'm not married to, to this thing.
Good thing.
It, you know, it just, it just seemed logical, you know, we do it, uh, with probes, and, you know, we're going to have a list of these folks, uh, and, you know, and I saw no reason to require them to do something that we're not requiring another group of folks to do.
Uh, any further comments on the proposed motion?
But this, this is not a burning issue, I think, so.
You want to withdraw, you want, you're here to withdraw, I withdraw my second. Okay.
Well, hey, then I'm going to withdraw my motion. Bust on this conversation.
We don't have anything on the floor, on the, except.
Now, wait a second.
Greg, too, like chihuahua.
Yeah, we've got the chihuahua detail on the floor.
No, what I'm, if, if you're saying that what this says, that I, I don't think it does, but that it's, that it says what the law is right now, which is, it's a lifetime license, uh, I don't look at it as a lifetime license, I look at it as a free license if you have your dog microchipped and these other things, so that's what I have, you know, so.
It's not a lifetime license, it's a free license.
It's a free license, you still have to come in, is this, it, it, it doesn't say this.
Well, let me just say that right now, there's nothing on the floor, we've had a second withdrawn.
That was a proposal, and I see now that it wasn't such a good idea.
We're on the principle, we're on the motion, excuse me, we're on the legislation that's been amended once by Alderman Witcher, what's, does anybody have any motion or any, uh, well, we're, we're, we're open for motions.
I guess we'll go to the point past it, though.
Okay, all right.
But do we want, back question, Mayor, I'm only one of the sponsors on it, uh, Alderman Barry, who is not here, and you're the other one, what timetable did we set, did we say we were going to pass it tonight, we're going to pass it?
We don't, we don't have a timetable, uh, we need, you know, we need to address it in due course, if there's any reason that we want to, uh, consider anything, uh, I do think we ought to do it, if not this time, certainly in.
I am happy with the amendments that have been made, and I think we've addressed probably ninety percent of the people's questions they had out. I'm ready to go to on tonight.
Okay, Dr., uh, Mayor? Dr. Allen's here tonight and wanted to make comment concerning this legislation, if we could recognize him.
Yeah, that, just, why don't we, Dr. Allen, hold off just a second, let me make sure that anybody doesn't have any motions, uh, that, because we, right now, we don't have anything on the floor.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to make the motion.
To adopt as amended?
Adopt as amended, but, but I, I, I'm one of the, one of the three sponsors, obviously.
Adopt it as amended, but, but I, I'm one of, one of the three sponsors, obviously.
That's fine with me.
Okay, all right, Mayor.
Just a second, you made that motion?
Made that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, now we're in discussion. Dr. Allen, you want to come to the microphone?
I'm going to read this, and I've, I've had to make some changes in it as we were talking here, so I'll, I'll try to make sense of it. The North Little Rock veterinarians recently met with Mr. Gray, and agreed that we would like to see the following changes made to the proposed ordinance. We feel that no breed should be banned, specifically banned, and ask that all references to banning any particular breed be changed to restricting. And thus would allow any restricted breed to comply with, with the sections D, which is, as long as the animal is spayed or neutered, it's under, it's under grandfathering. Isn't that, isn't that section D?
Yep.
Yeah. And I, I tell you what, it'd probably be better for me to give you all this sheet of paper, like, like we kind of felt it should be, let me read it first, to kind of give you an idea of what it's, what it's going to say. The animal, under section D, number one, right after animal, it should, if older than four months of age, was licensed, because an animal before four months of age cannot be licensed. Okay?
Dr. Allen, I, I think you brought up some issues, we basically need to hold this legislation.
Okay.
Because you're bringing in things that's going to be, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you, if you can give those to us in writing, and we will have a, maybe have them distributed to us.
That'd be fine.
What I hear is Alderman Gibson asking to withdraw his motion for adoption if-
I withdraw the second. Because I didn't, I thought that, I thought we'd complied with everything that you brought up.
I know one of the things, let me, let me mention, now, because I've heard from our animal shelter, Mr. Gray, that, that there was some concern about the banning, you know, and, and I know, at least in terms of, of, you know, future, the banning of pit bulls and grandfathering those that are here, I agree with that. I was, you know, in a position to disagree with that recommendation, so at some point, we're going to have to, to vote, and I would hope that any input that anyone wants to have, and we're certainly very interested and appreciative, appreciative of the input from our veterinarians, but I'm, I'm asking, I'm going to, I'm going to encourage us to look, if not the next council meeting, I'm definitely going to make sure that the first council meeting in December, if not the next one, that we bring this to a vote, and, and any, anyone that wants to have input, you know, we've carried this on, and we're going to carry it on another, at least another two weeks, but I would, I would be very remiss if we delayed it any longer than the next council meeting. So with that, and with Alderman Gibson withdrawing it, you know, Dr. Allen, if we could have those input, and I don't know, I'll visit with our animal control officer, Mr. Gray, but if any council member wants, and this is what my suggestion would be, if you have any amendments to the existing legislation, you know, either visit with me, or visit with one of our council members, to see if we will be prepared to offer amendments at the next meeting, to address what you're interested in, so we can start voting on some of these.
Could, could I offer this?
Sure.
That I, okay.
Why don't, why don't you give it to Ms. Whitby, so she can make copies of it, too? You just have one copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you read my writing, I'm sure I'll make your copy.
The phone number's on there, I'll call you.
Diane, if you would make copies of that and ensure that each council member has it, Dr. Allen, we again appreciate your help, as well as all of the veterinarians in our city. With that, the legislation will be held, and, and let's drive toward amendments at the next council meeting, Alderman Witcher.
All right, Mayor, we, we have the Director of the Hot Springs Animal Control with us this evening, and I was wondering if, you know, we could allow him to speak?
Let's, let's see what Alderman Bestel has to say.
Mayor also would ask Mr. Suskey to clarify the, the iconic licensing of the dogs, so that we can have something that's very clear on what exactly the regulations are now, and what the requirements of the people that own dogs are, as, as it is written now, on the lifetime license.
Oh, yeah, now, I totally disagree with what that veterinarian said. That may be what's going on in practice out there. The way it's written, if you have a lifetime license, you have a lifetime license. I've had three cats, I have a lifetime license, I do not get them licensed every year, I've got them spayed and neutered, got a license. There is still a state law requirement and a city ordinance requirement, you get them vaccinated every year. Once you get a lifelong license, it's a lifelong license. That's what one of my cats looked like one time, but, but essentially, that's what it is.
We may want to clarify, clarify that somewhat.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And, you know, I, you know, what the veterinarians, what Dr. Allen is doing, sounds to me like a, a better option than, than just letting everybody get that license, just run, run willy-nilly.
They want to get them vaccinated, so.
Yeah, I, I do not believe we can prosecute somebody who has a lifetime license if they don't get one every year, and I would not prosecute the case as it's written.
Well, if they didn't get a vaccination.
Then they'd get prosecuted for not getting a vaccination.
It's pretty difficult to-
Prove.
If you go up and ask the cat, did you get, you get vaccinated?
Sometimes the owners will volunteer that information.
You know, we're going to get Martin a cat for Christmas.
All right, you know, it'll be held, next item.
Ordinance 046.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hot Springs Animal Shelter Director, if you're here, you want to come and, you know, add, I would say add two cents, but we appreciate you coming all the way to Hot Springs, so you got four cents.
Appreciate you taking the time to listen for just a second. I think you folks are doing, taking a responsible approach. Many communities have reached out and banned this breed, other communities have done nothing. I think it's, you know, the dog or the breed has become popular in a culture, or, or in an age group, if you were to break down the bites or the ownerships of these breeds, there are going to be people that are irresponsible, that we're running into in our shelters, are going to be the younger folks that don't own property, or kind of, kind of a, a, a issue in the community, that, that have this dog as a status symbol. It also tends to be a part of the drug culture, this breed does. And I know this is probably going to make people that, that are responsible Staffordshire pit bull owners a cringe, but this dog has led itself, it's such an adaptive breed, that they'll do whatever it's asked, and it's, it's become that kind of a situation, it's an intercity issue, it's not a rural issue, it's more intercity than it is anything else, and you're taking a responsible approach, not, not to ban it, but to restrict it, and put a little emphasis on ownership and responsibilities there, and I applaud you for that.
We haven't done anything yet, so save your applause for whatever our results are.
Three-minute recess.
Anything else, sir? We appreciate you coming over and sharing your perspective. With that, it'll be held the next council meeting, it'll take a three-minute recess. Three minutes.
Let it be said, Mrs. Whitby.
Oh, you got some? Goodness gracious, did I stir the pot, man? I'm sorry. Uh, no, I, I'm sorry, I don't even know what that is.
I'm sure I'm going to, I'm going to try to get some.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. And we got, we have another 12,000, though? I, I saw that, I saw that.
They are wanting copies now, so, so we're getting copies made for them.
Now, also, he's getting ready to do some sidewalks down in Willow Beach. You know, I want him, I want him, those people have some real nice places, and they're a little concerned, they, they thought he had done some pretty shoddy work in other areas, but I think if we stay with him, he'll do a good job on it. Some of them, and, and I don't know, I don't, no, not me, I hadn't, I hadn't seen any shoddy work, they're just one of them, some of them, mention that, you know. I mentioned Dean Edwards and some of the people, they want to make sure, you know, they are proud of those lawns down there, and I want to make sure that. Oh, I know, they won't, they won't. But I hadn't, I hadn't, and I hadn't, I hadn't, I hadn't seen a thing bad, but, but one, one of the partners down there said, now, are they going, said, we've been hearing things that they want to do good, that just, that just here, so don't worry about it. Yeah. I'm going to tell you, we need to, out there, out there. Martin, Dave, Simon, Sam.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Maybe ten? Hopefully, things will start rolling.
Now, now, I told you the time this year last week, my sleeping habits have not coincided yet. They forgot.
I'm one of these people that eight hours is good.
And then sometime when you-
Four is bad, less is bad, eight is good.
Let's go down, tell us.
And this morning, I looked up at four.
Why are we?
So I didn't get my eight. And I watched a scary movie, and I had bad news.
He said he's been dead. But, but he explains why he's worried.
Can we ask council members to come back to your seats?
Alderman Gibson, you're not changing that seat, you're welcome. We're reconvening, this council member, this council meeting, Ms. Whitby, would you please call the next piece of legislation?
Yes, our ordinance 0463, Alderman Witcher.
I'd like to call it for an amendment, please.
And I'd like to ask you, Alderman Witcher, then, after we address the amendment, to hold it the next council meeting, I sure would like to visit with you if I had it.
Okay, I can do that, Mayor.
All right. Ms. Whitby, Alderman Witcher wants it read.
This is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 7176, the signed ordinance and all amendments thereto, replacing North Little Rock Municipal Code, section 83.1, third and final reading.
Alderman Witcher?
Yeah, the, okay, the amendment that I am proposing.
Just for purposes of amendment, let's call it a move for adoption, so we can get it before.
So moved.
No, it's, it's read, so it's, it's only its third reading.
It's only its third reading.
Yeah, generally, we have it before us, by way of motion.
If we move it.
To adopt, and then we amend it, I mean, it's, you know, it's procedural, and so it, you know, it's fine with me.
Okay.
We just, we just establish a procedure, then, when we have it read, we can amend it, so we'll, we've sort of done it both ways, I think, so we'll just rule it's right for amendment, go ahead.
Just depending if you're a boarder, I guess? I'm okay.
Okay, the, the proposals that I am proposing deals with banners in the section having to do with definitions under banner sign. Our present standard calls for five by twenty, and we have proposed to shrink it to three by ten. After reflecting on it, I think we should leave it at five and twenty, five feet vertical, twenty feet horizontal. And with that change, there also is a change under section 8328, temporary special event banners and devices, and in, I would like for item two, so that the maximum size for a banner or device shall be five feet vertical and twenty feet horizontal. I think it gives a square footage.
So it can be a hundred square foot?
No, but, well, I, I do not want a hundred square feet to appear, I want no more than five feet vertical, and no more than twenty feet horizontal.
I agree. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Okay, the, the next one, Mayor, is one that Mr. Gibson had pointed out in section 83-23. It, in item one, it refers to all signs that's permitted in section 8321, and I would like to say, except six and seven.
A, six and seven.
A, six and seven.
That'd be at 8322, you would change it to item one, all signs that's permitted in section 8321, except A, six, and A seven.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, second.
Discussion on the motion to amend.
I guess the only question I had, would that apply to those that have signs now, or just people coming in?
Means in residential zones, you're not going to be able to put these signs in there.
So you-
It would be new, new issued signs.
So you're eliminating them, aren't you, Dan?
Yes.
Why would you want a company sign in a residential area? I have another residential.
Well, there actually are some folks that, that operate real estate companies, and or have home offices, and they have, they'll have signs out front. Well, when I say they operate a real estate company, they're required to display a real estate sign in order to hold their license, someplace.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Okay. All right, I have no further amendments at this time.
I have, I have one. This, this comes from the last time, too, and, and residential areas, that we regulate real estate signs, shall be no larger than two by three feet, which is the normal size, so we don't get any huge ones, like you see in some of these commercial areas and stuff. So these, that's the normal size that you use.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Where are you at, Mayor?
We got to come to a place we're going to do it, right here.
Oh, in eighty-
It's 8321, three, it, it says, one non-aluminal real estate sign for a lot of premises shall, signs shall be played within a side triangle, so you, and that sign shall not exceed two feet by three feet.
And that will handle the residential zones.
Handle the residential zones.
Okay.
Is that the motion made and seconded, any discussion on the mo, on the motion?
Uh, yes, in eighty-three twenty-three, uh, same change, R-four and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Any other amendments?
Yes.
Uh, yes, in eighty-three twenty-three, uh, same change, R-four and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Okay. All right, I, I have no further amendments at this time.
I have, I have one. This, this comes from the last time, too, and, uh, in residential areas, that we regulate real estate signs, shall be no larger than two by three feet, which is the normal size, so we don't get any huge ones, like you see in some of these commercial areas and stuff. So, these, that's the normal size that you use.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Where are you at, Mayor?
We gotta come to a place we're gonna do it, right here. It's eighty-three twenty-one three. It, it says, "One non-luminal real estate sign for a lot or premises shall, signs shall be played within a side triangle," so you, and that sign shall not exceed two feet by three feet. And that will handle the residential zones. Handle the residential zones. Okay.
Is that the motion made and seconded? Uh, any discussion on the mo, on the motion?
Gibson?
Hold it, hold it a minute.
Um-
That won't take care of it.
On the, when you, when you say, why don't you just make it six square feet?
'Cause you don't want it.
Yeah, 'cause-
Well, they would do it one by five.
That's exactly right.
Or one by six.
You could have this big long tall thing, so you don't want to do that. It's two by, two, that's, that's the, two by three is the normal size that everybody uses.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
We gotta clean that up just a little bit, Mayor, because I've gotten a little bit- He told us the wrong thing to do. I told him the place, the wrong place to put it. I think it needs to go in eighty-three twenty-two. Needs to go in eighty-three twenty-two. Needs to be an item two in, uh, under eighty-three twenty-two, and in eighty-three twenty-three, both places. It said, uh, "Real estate signs shall not exceed two, three, two feet by three feet."
Are you making it eighty-three twenty-two A, number two?
Yeah. You're gonna follow my advice that I gave you. Now, hold it out. You want them to- You're right, R-four and R-five, you're correct. So, it'd be eighty-three twenty-two and eighty-three twenty-three, there would be an addition to both of those, which would say, "Real estate signs shall not exceed two, three, two feet by three feet." Because if you do this, it goes to all eight.
You got that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's your motion, I assume there's a second to it. Uh, any further discussion on that motion? Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Okay. All right, I, I have no further amendments at this time.
I have, I have one. This, this comes from the last time, too, and, uh, in residential areas, that we regulate real estate signs, shall be no larger than two by three feet, which is the normal size, so we don't get any huge ones, like you see in some of these commercial areas and stuff. So, these, that's the normal size that you use.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. But I'm, I'm-
Where are you at, Mayor?
We gotta come to a place we're gonna do it, right here. It's eighty-three twenty-one three. It, it says, "One non-luminal real estate sign for a lot or premises shall, signs shall be played within a side triangle," so you, and that sign shall not exceed two feet by three feet. And that will handle the residential zones. Handle the residential zones. Okay.
Is that the motion made and seconded? Uh, any discussion on the mo, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Can we get a, can we get a fresh, uh, Leo? Absolutely. Copy as soon as it's available? Absolutely. We'll have a fresh copy that goes out with next, uh, council agenda, I assume.
I understand we're gonna hold this now.
Gonna hold it, right.
Correct, okay, correct.
Next item?
Just one second.
We're rolling now.
Ordinance oh-four sixty-five, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please. This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a group house and shelter.
Oh, no.
He needs to withdraw it.
He's asked for it to be called.
Go ahead and read it.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for a group house and shelter in an outdoor thrift sales, and it's C-four zone for certain property located thirty-seven nineteen East Broadway in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
With your pleasure, Alderman.
I moved it to rule this, based on a second reading.
Now, this is the one that we dealt with in special call, similar issue, right?
I want, I want, I want to throw, go ahead, I'm sorry, 'cause I've got a question.
Wait a minute, I just want a clarification.
I'll second it.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm just asking a clarification, is this the same one that we dealt, same substance of what we dealt with in special call?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is suspend the rules, place it on second reading.
Actually, that-
I got a question or something.
Actually, that was the second reading, so it would be placing it on the third and final reading.
Okay.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yes. If we, if we turn this down, then we undo what we previously did.
That's why it should be withdrawn.
That's why I say, too, but if we, you know, it means that the group shelter that we passed and the outdoor thrift sales, then neither one of them would be allowed, if we turn this one down. Is that correct?
Yeah, my advice is I withdraw, Alderman Thomas.
What?
My advice is to withdraw it, 'cause it's already been approved-
Okay, I withdraw.
-the special call.
I'm not gonna withdraw.
Withdrawn, next item?
Ordinance oh-four sixty-six, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please. This is an ordinance established in Haley's first edition municipal property owners improvement district number one, third and final reading.
Uh, move for adoption? Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend by the insertion of extending this until December thirty-first of oh-five.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, and our new, newly-elect, uh, municipal judge, Mr. Morley, is in the audience, he's been helping us with this legislation, but he's gonna help us with court after the first of the year, and we, uh, uh, welcome you back to the City of Fall with a Black Road, uh, Black, Black Road come, uh, first of the year, uh, Judge Morley, to be.
Unexpired.
Uh, we, uh, we're, we're glad to have you back. Uh, next item?
Resolution oh-four one hundred, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving the two thousand five to two thousand ten consolidated plan, update action plan for the city of North Little Rock, including the thirty-first year two thousand five CDBG projects and budgets, budgets, and home program funds.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, what do you want us to do?
Uh, what we need tonight is, uh, approval on the five-year consolidated plan, and then it'll go for a thirty-day comment period, so we also need to have a hearing tonight just opening up to the public, and then it will be published in the newspaper for a thirty-day comment period.
Okay, do we have Exhibit A in front of us?
Yes.
Yes, you all got a copy.
It needs to be amended in.
We need a motion to amend that in.
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded that the consolidated plan be amended, uh, in its Exhibit A on the motion.
Gibson?
I don't have it. Yes. They mailed it, they mailed it to us.
You got it in the mail.
I brought it by Friday to your house.
It's at home.
Mr. Gibson?
I'll find it.
Is that it?
Gibson votes.
Yes, yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now it's amended in, uh, so you want, you recommending we go ahead and move forward with the adoption?
Correct.
All right.
Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now it's amended in, uh, so you want, you recommending we go ahead and move forward with the adoption?
Correct.
All right.
Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now it's amended in, uh, so you want, you recommending we go ahead and move forward with the adoption?
Correct.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Any other amendments?
Yes.
Uh, yes, in eighty-three twenty-three, uh, same change, R-four and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now it's amended in, uh, so you want, you recommending we go ahead and move forward with the adoption?
Correct.
All right.
Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now it's amended in, uh, so you want, you recommending we go ahead and move forward with the adoption?
Correct.
All right.
Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-four one oh four, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, City Attorney's Office asking to hold this for this, this point.
Actually, no, there are a couple individuals here, the attorneys, I believe, who own it, are here to speak, we need to let them speak to, you know, for a public hearing.
All right, well, do you still want me to hold it?
Actually, well, we'll let them speak, I think it's a legal issue that would need to be determined by court, and we'll just let the courts decide, but we'll have the public hearing first.
All right.
Do you want me to read it first?
Just read it.
A resolution certifying the amount of the lien to the Pulaski County Tax Collector for placement on the Pulaski County Tax Rolls for fifty-one oh seven Allen, seven oh nine West Fifty-first Street.
Been a few years, but I'll introduce Mr. John Rye, we, we fought battles on a regular basis in the four hundred and twenty-first Civil Affairs Company, and, uh, perhaps, uh, the unit is better off since we've retired, uh, but it's, at least me, anyway, John. Welcome, John Rye.
I retired in nineteen ninety.
Not too late to get called back up?
That's what I understand. They'd be better off without me, I'm sure.
In sixty-three.
Thank you for letting me talk to you a minute. Uh, I'm a real estate broker, my business license is in North Little Rock, I've got a big stake in North Little Rock. Uh, at the rate you're annexing, I will soon be a resident of North Little Rock, which I think's a pretty good idea, I'm, I'm all for it. Uh, I want to talk to you a little bit about the procedure that you're starting into, 'cause this is a new procedure for the city, you hadn't been doing this in the past, and I really would like for you to think about what you're doing, because I think you may run into some unanticipated results that's not good for the city. The city of Little Rock has done it, and it's, it is hurting their downtown. Um, over the past several years, I've caused hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of real estate to go back on the tax books in the city of North Little Rock. They range anywhere from weed lots to nice houses, that's my understanding, I have an offer of almost eighty thousand dollars on a house in Arrowhead Manor that I bought for taxes and renovated. Um, even once upon a time, I bought a church in Levy that had been turned into a daycare center, and then abandoned, and it was horrible. It was a mistake for me to buy it, but I bought it, I spent a blue ton of money fixing it back up, and a blue ton's a whole lot. Uh, and it's now a church again, and it's a nice building. I'd like to keep doing that. We bought a vacant lot at Fifty-first and Allen Street, and that's what we're here for today. Um, there is a lawsuit pending on it, right now, we have a quiet title lawsuit pending. All of the issues have been settled, except the issue of the city lien of North Little Rock. Um, I'd like to go through this with you quickly, uh, 'cause I know it's late, just to, to tell you a little bit about how we're here, and, and give you a suggestion or two of, of maybe what you'd want to do in the future. Uh, this is, the first page is a, is a sheet out of the Commissioner State Lands Rules and Regulations, Tax Laws Governing Redemption and Sale of Delinquent Lands. Uh, if you don't pay your property taxes, after a certain period of time, the property is forfeited to the state of Arkansas. The forfeiture takes the form of a certification from the county. When the county certifies the property to the Commissioner State Lands, the state of Arkansas owns the property. Okay? That's basically the gist of the first page. The second page is the certificate from the county to the state of Arkansas. So, the property that we're talking about became the property of the state of Arkansas on the twenty-third of March of nineteen ninety-eight by this certificate, and it is a public record, I mean, it's just like a deed. The next page is a resolution from the city, uh, condemning this property and saying it
We fought battles on a regular basis in the 431st Civil Affairs Company, and perhaps the unit is better off since we've retired, but at least me, anyway, John. Welcome, John Ryle.
I retired in 1990.
Not too late to get called back up?
That's what I understand. They'd be better off without me, I'm sure.
In '63.
Thank you for letting me talk to you a minute. I'm a real estate broker, my business license is in North Little Rock, I've got a big stake in North Little Rock. At the rate you're annexing, I will soon be a resident of North Little Rock, which I think's a pretty good idea, I'm all for it. I want to talk to you a little bit about the procedure that you're starting into, because this is a new procedure for the city, you hadn't been doing this in the past, and I really would like for you to think about what you're doing, because I think you may run into some unanticipated results that's not good for the city. The city of Little Rock has done it, and it is hurting there downtown. Over the past several years, I've caused hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of real estate to go back on the tax books in the city of North Little Rock. They range anywhere from weed lots to nice houses, that's my understanding, I have an offer of almost $80,000 on a house in Arrowhead Manor that I bought for taxes and renovated. Even once upon a time, I bought a church in Levy that had been turned into a daycare center and then abandoned, and it was horrible. It was a mistake for me to buy it, but I bought it, I spent a blue ton of money fixing it back up, and a blue ton's a whole lot. And it's now a church again, and it's a nice building. I'd like to keep doing that. We bought a vacant lot at 51st and Allen Street, and that's what we're here for today. There is a lawsuit pending on it, right now, we have a quiet title lawsuit pending, all of the issues have been settled, except the issue of the city lien in North Little Rock. I'd like to go through this with you quickly, because I know it's late, just to tell you a little bit about how we're here and give you a suggestion or two of maybe what you'd want to do in the future. This is, the first page is a sheet out of the Commissioner of State Lands Rules and[1597.12]